All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Lakewood City Council Special Meeting in Lakewood, Colorado. On Monday, August seventh, two thousand and twenty-three at six P. M. This is a virtual meeting. In order to join that meeting, the telephone number is going to be seven two zero seven oh seven two six nine nine. And the webinar ID is the same for that dial-in as well as for Zoom, and that's going to be eight two zero six two eight one three zero eight six. Again, the webinar ID is eight two zero six two eight one three zero eight six. With that, will the clerk please call the roll?
Paul.
Here.
Abel.
Liam.
Here. Franks.
Here.
Janson.
Here.
Mia Carrera.
Here.
Oliver.
Here.
Sharazai.
Here.
Springsteen.
Yeah.
Stewart.
Here.
Strom.
Here.
And Vincent.
Here.
Mayor Paul, you have a quorum.
Okay, great. Thanks. I'd like to quickly just state our statement of conflict of interest. If any members have any personal, financial, or business interests, please feel free to say so, or council is able to exclude that as well. I have two hands up. Counselor Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I'd like to make a motion to recess into an executive session for conference with the city attorney for the purposes of receiving legal advice on specific questions under the Colorado Revised Statutes twenty-four dash six dash four oh two parents for parents B and Lakewood Municipal Charter two point one five parents C parents for focusing upon legal issues arising out of H. B. Twenty-three twelve fifty-five.
Okay, we have a motion to go into an executive session to receive legal advice based upon what's coming later on in the evening. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion as to the actual motion that Counselor Stewart has made? Okay, Counselor Abel. You are muted, sir. Counselor Abel, you're muted.
Thank you. Again, this is the public's business. The public passed this initiative we'll be discussing tonight in a very widely discussed vote. And I think that our discussions about the public's business belong in public. Thank you. I'll be voting against the motions.
Okay, Counselor Oliver to the motion.
Yes, could Councilmember Stewart explain why we should go to secret session as opposed to having it in public? Because I'm also, I'm I tend to believe that the more people that see what we're doing, the better your governments will work. So if you have, but if you have a really good, a good reason for it, I certainly will listen.
Counselor Stewart.
Sure, thank you. I would be happy to provide an explanation. I absolutely agree. I think that the the city's business should be conducted in public as much as possible. And I do want to clarify that in executive sessions, no votes happen for that very reason. My concern is that we can't receive a lot of legal advice in a public meeting right now because of the delicate legal nature of this situation. And so I would love for us as a council to just be able to get, you know, the, the take of our legal counsel from our city attorney before we make any sorts of decisions. And I know that there are a lot of questions that a lot of us have that are not going to be able to be answered in a public forum because they're subject to attorney-client privilege and a lot of liability that comes along with that. So I would like all of us to be able to ask questions and have a candid legal discussion, which we cannot have unfortunately, just because of the nature of this situation. So I would, you know, I would love for all of us to be able to have that discussion before we make such an important decision. It feels a little bit like we're flying blind right now, and I frankly just don't feel like we're going to be able to get a lot more information. We're not going to be able to receive legal advice at all in public, and I just think that that would benefit our decision-making process tonight to be able to do that.
Counselor Oliver.
Yeah, thanks. Good answer, but, but I'm not going to vote for it. I'd rather keep it in public. And as for, and I've heard this, the client attorney privilege many, used many times, but city council's the client. And it's, we're looking out for city council under these secret meetings. And as member of city council, I don't, I'm not worried about somebody suing us for telling them the truth. And so I'm a, I just don't love the idea of being secret, and so I'm going to have to vote against this too. Thank you.
Counselor Janson to the motion.
I, I tend to agree. I am all for transparency. This is a public issue. It needs to be discussed in the public, so I will be voting no on executive session. Thank you.
Counselor Springsteen.
I guess I'm a little confused about why we're making this motion again when we already decided not to go to it into executive session on this issue. And the reasons given by the counselors who voted against it was transparency and the right of the public to be part of this process of decision-making. Recently, the Denver Public Schools got in a lot of trouble over going into an executive session when it was not warranted. And an executive session is warranted in very specific circumstances where we're looking at very specific fiduciary issues, not where, where we're looking at making policy to supersede the will of the voters. And so what I would suggest is, like DPS, if we go into executive session in order to make policy and the press sues us the way that they did DPS, we are in a lot bigger trouble than we are just going before the public right now. You know, I still haven't heard from you, Counselor Stewart, or from our legal counsel, what, what it is that we're getting attorney-client privileged information about. And what I would also say is that communications from our legal counsel have essentially been intimidating communications where if we don't go along with whatever that advice is, that we are personally liable in some way because somehow they know everything there is to know about the law. So I'm not convinced that this would even be useful to us. I think it's bad advice to, to tell a city council that you know, localities just go along with whatever state and federal law supersedes our law. I mean, I would take issue with that and that attitude because the thing is, we fought a civil war over that issue. And states battle with the federal government on, on superseding state law all the time. So anyway, I nobody can tell us why this is attorney-client privileged information that we are talking about and why we won't get in trouble, just like the DPS board did very recently for going into executive session to make policy. So that's my issue.
Counselor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I wanted to indicate that I would be supporting going into an executive session, but certainly wanted to share why. I think it's sort of analogous to if I have a dispute with someone or don't agree with something, and then I'm asked to record my conversations with my, my legal representative about when I'm exploring options. Like if I chose this option, how does this particular piece of the legislation fit? Or what are our possible remedies? And so for me, it's a matter of wanting to be able to explore and press upon some of the very relevant issues in a way in which I'm not sharing that information with folks who may later, depending on whatever action we take, may decide that that is adverse to their interests and would want to take us to court. So it's really me doing my due diligence. Of course, you know, we would come back into a regular session. Any votes would happen there, as Counselor Stewart said, but this is a matter of very, a lot, lot of complexity and wanting to be fully educated in making a decision that honors my fiduciary responsibility, honors what I know about what my constituents, what their interests are. And so I will be supporting this. We do need a super majority, and so I just want the community to know that, that the good decision-making happens when you have all the relevant information. And I think there are legal questions that some of us have that would not be able to be explored in this public forum, but would definitely be impactful to, to how a vote would go once you have that information. So I will be in support of this, and I am certainly hopeful that we can get a super majority to move into executive session and do the people's work. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Strom.
Thank you. The bottom line is that there are a lot of decisions that that were being asked to make tonight and, well, tonight and in the months to come. There are decisions that come with liability. Liability that we, I believe, do not have enough information to really come up with the best decisions for our broader Lakewood community. There's so many things that are involved in this. And this, this is during the executive session for this process, it's a very defined when it's allowed and what can and cannot be done. We're not allowed to go off agenda. Votes do not happen. It's very specific, and it's not one that's just Lakewood that's doing it. Golden, in fact, will be going through this process tomorrow night as well. But I, it's incumbent upon me, I believe, as a fiduciary for the city, that we're actually making these decisions with all of the information that is applicable to that. And, you know, to the that the point that was made earlier, like if you're having a legal dispute and there could potentially be legal disputes between many parties here, you've got to be able to consult with an attorney before you decide best how to move forward. And so I too would be in support of re, readdressing that possibility as we move forward.
Thank you. Counselor Ma Correia.
Thank you. I am also in favor of going into an executive session for several reasons that I think have already been expressed, but again, the the notion that we would actually make a choice in executive session, right, that's just not true. That's not the point of it. The point is that we can really find out, like, what are the possible legal consequences of various pathways without having that then be something that corners us into these types of like legal responsibilities and allowing us to have that honest consultation. And pardon me for, I'm starting to lose my voice today for some reason. Um, but I also want to say, you know, the public transparency is so necessary for actually a policymaking. But of course, one of the reasons that an executive session is necessary with something that is potentially legally tumultuous is because all sides of folks are a part of the public, right? It is not just people who are pro keeping the SGI exactly as it is. It is also developers, right? And so I think that there is sort of, you know, and I don't think that, like, my feeling on the cap, right, like, I don't, I don't like the SGI very much. I'm very honest about that. But my notion on why we need to have an executive session is not actually to advance that because that's just not a good way to see. It's really specifically to think about how are we not making our community vulnerable? How are we like honoring both the like duties that we have basically financially and legally in this space in a changing legal landscape? And we really saw the last time that we were discussing our potential, this potential ordinance of extending for the twenty-four months with the idea that we would then have to sunset it and have something else, which is what that law allegedly requires, right? We were trying to ask some really specific questions about what are those potential repercussions? What does that process look like? We weren't able to get the answers for this exact reason. And so I know that I don't actually have all of the information that I need to make, like, the smartest possible policy decision in this tricky moment. So I will definitely be in favor of this executive session.
Counselor Vincent.
Um, I won't belabor anything that everybody else has already said, but one additional piece of information, when you go into an executive session, everybody hears the same information at the same time. They're also allowed to ask clarifying questions if something's not said so that everybody has an equal opportunity to understand the same information at the same time, which when you have something such as this is, I think, extremely important. Whenever, and I don't think we use executive sessions willy-nilly, I'll say. They're only when called, when important, and when we need information. So I will, of course.
You, you went on mute at the very end, but I think you were saying you're going to support. So thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Abel. You're muted.
There we go. I believe last week we had a reading of the law that governs executive sessions. And it refers to a specific legal question to be answered before we can go into executive session. That's relevant. That's also required. And media, having half a loaf is not enough when you're talking about taking something out of the public realm and putting it behind the cloak of executive session. So number one, what is the specific legal question? Counselor Rebecca. Counselor, you made the motion.
But Counselor, if you want to restate the, the motion, because that's, again, just like last week, it's the same as this week.
Oh, yeah, we'll duck all the requirements because it's inconvenient. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor, don't worry about it. Counselor Springsteen, go ahead.
Again, there was a lot in the press about the DPS going into executive session. And one of the things that the press sued about was that state law allows elected officials to meet in executive session to discuss certain legally sensitive matters, including staff or student information that must be kept confidential, some contract negotiations, lawsuits, and other topics. But the topics and legal justification for the executive session must, must be described in a public agenda item that, that is noticed to the public ahead of time. Making a motion here tonight is not noticing to the public the exact legal item that we are, we would be discussing in executive session. You have had plenty of time to come up with something like that. This motion is inadequate. You know, and I mean, this was extremely embarrassing to DPS. It was months of litigation. Many, many in the press were involved in the litigation. And specifically, it was regarding the formation of public policy which may not be conducted in secret. And that is what we are contemplating here tonight. We, we are not we, we, we are, you are contemplating being advised which of the three items that we should choose from. That is creation of public policy that is specific to making policy. And that is outside the sight of the public. And what I would say to all of you who are in favor of this, you are in favor of lack of transparency, of covering up government wrongdoing, of covering up.
Counsel, let's be careful with the accusations, please. Let's just stick to the facts about the motion that's on the table, please. Thank you.
Just like the mayor who always interrupts me whenever I'm saying something that is getting to the heart of the matter.
Well, I'm just trying to keep some decorum. This is a, this is a a powerful subject, but we don't want to attack the people. We want to just talk about what's before us, and that's the executive session, not the intent by people wanting to have this conversation, okay?
What I want to attack is the lack of transparency of this local government who should be behind the will of the voters and should not be trying to hide things from the voters who voted for this particular policy.
Right. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janson.
Thank you. So I just want to say that the executive session was not properly noticed, and I don't think it's should be legal right at this moment. And also, you know, when we're in executive session, our hands are tied, and we cannot talk about what happens in the executive session. So that's another thing. The public needs to know what we're talking about. This is, this is their, they voted for this initiative. This is a public, they need to know. Thanks.
So I'm just going to say a couple of things. Keep in mind, we represent all the public, those that voted for this and those that didn't vote for it, right? And we have a fiduciary responsibility.
Yes.
Counselor, Counselor, have the floor. Thank you. And, and I would just also say that in my sixteen years of service to this city, we've never been questioned upon the legality of our executive sessions. We, we follow them to the letter of the law. And it's my understanding that the body can enact a legal motion to go in an executive session, which was clearly stated to address legal consultation regarding House Bill twelve fifty-five, which takes effect tomorrow. In fact, we have a, a neighbor who's doing the same thing and, and going forth. So I'd ask our attorney just to clarify if this is a legal motion, if council has the ability and what that looks like. I don't know if you can comment on DPS, but we're not going in to make policy by any means. The DPS situation was much different than what this is. Ms. McKinney-Brown?
Yes. As several council members have said at previous city council meetings, that you may go into executive session in any city council meeting as long as you give verbal notice, which is within the language of the motion that Councilmember Stewart utilized. So this is absolutely lawfully noticed, and this is a regular practice of all city councils to go into executive session. This is not comparable to the DPS issue. DPS did not go into executive session just to consult with their attorney. They went to executive session to discuss a whole lot of policy issues. That's different to go into executive session to talk to your attorney about legal research, legal concerns, legal thoughts. That's a very different thing. That information, if made public, could bind the hands of the city council members, and therefore that information is never made public so that the city council members have the freedom to make the best decisions they can find for the city.
Thank you. And, and I would just add, unfortunately, I, I hope that we can do this. I'm seeing that we probably won't be able to. And that's going to limit my ability on, on what I can proceed with tonight as far as what I can support of basically three options forward without having a full understanding and, and understanding of where and how this lies and our liabilities as a city. Again, knowing that we represent all of the residents of the city of Lakewood and have that responsibility. Mayor Protem Strom.
Thank you. I would like to just go on record again that this is not a vote that I am doing to set policy. When policy is being set, we would be going through our normal channels that are very public, that are very process-driven, and are very transparent, transparent. I am doing this, looking at it from a fiduciary capacity. I want to be clear that I would like to consult with my attorney to answer questions that are coming to us, like, are we going to sue the state? Can we sue the state and other types of liability that might come to the city of Lakewood depending on the decisions that we make as it moves us past tomorrow? It's about liability. We would follow the normal process to put policy in place.
Thank you. Counselor Abel. You're muted, sir.
I'd like to correct a couple of pieces of slightly misinformation that have been delivered in the last few minutes. Granted, Golan has this on their agenda tomorrow night. But according to Rick Merleby, Golden's Community Development Coordinator, there is no ordinance and there is no resolution to discuss. It's just the general talk. It's not even on voters' radar screen yet. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. And just to go back to the reason why, is there kind of where we were two weeks ago when we tried to do this and have that conversation? They were waiting to see what we did after a conversation I had with some of their elected, so.
They're not hearing it tomorrow. Thank you.
Counselor Janson.
Okay, so it doesn't matter if you're for it or you're against it. The people voted for it and it passed. So you can't go behind the people and, and say, oh, well, we don't like it because the other people didn't like it, so we're going to vote against it. And that's not the, it's, it's a, it's, it's, this is not part of our democracy. And that's not the, it's, it's a, it's, it's, this is not part of our democracy. They voted for this. It was part of the citizen initiative. They voted for it and they won. Um, I won by seven votes. Does that mean that, oh, I'm not really a counselor? I mean, come on, you know, and then you're, you want to do this, you want to um go behind, behind and vote, try to vote it out? The people need to see what's going on, and that's why I am not for this executive session.
Counselor Oliver?
Thank you. Uh, I would point out one thing is that we have the city attorney sitting in front of us at all of our meetings. And we ask her questions at most of our meetings and she answers, and so I still do have not wrapped my head around why there are certain questions that we have to have in secret. But but perhaps you can help me, um, Ms. McKenney Brown. Um, you were saying something about we might get bound up. Do you, can you come up with a hypothetical thing where we? Yeah, I mean, yeah, some hypothetical situation where we get in trouble if we go into executive session or we go get into trouble if we don't go in the executive session. Um, I believe uh Counselor Strom mentioned something about suing the state. That might be hypothetical. Um, I I imagine that is actually not. Um, well, it's tough for me to come up with even something hypothetical where we can't tell the citizens what's going on. So, you know, give it a shot.
I'm not good at coming up with hypotheticals. Uh, it's too easy to trip into to uh areas where you reveal information. So I think the issue is if I tell the city council, my research has shown that X is legal or X is not legal. Anyone who votes against the the legal advice is going to, is going to have the concern that they have acted against advice of council. And if that creates fiduciary harm to the city, then have they specifically caused fiduciary harm to the city? And that's not just this issue. It's any policy issue. If you ask me about uh Roberts rules or those those administrative matters, I respond to those during a regular city council meeting. When we're talking about developing policy, I don't make public statements because this isn't a, this isn't for the city attorney to decide. This is for the city council to decide. If the city council is wanting to make this decision without knowing what the legal research is, that's the city council's decision. If the city council wants to meet the city attorney to know what the city attorney's office has researched on this, we're happy to advise you on that information as well. But at this point, we're seeing this as a policy decision that has some significant legal issues attached to it. So um, no, I don't have a hypothetical, but I hope that answers your question. I think that's the best I can do.
Okay, I do have a little follow up there, though, because you mentioned something that you, and this was in your email that was sent to us today, um, late in the afternoon. And it was number four, I think, or something about that. Um, you were talking about if we don't follow your.
Sir, that was an attorney client privileged email. If you are repeating information out of attorney client privileged email, you violate charter. And so I'm going to advise you, please don't make public statements about information received in privileged communications.
Okay, this, in that case, this is hypothetical. Um, two lawyers walk into a room. Um, then one says something is legal and another says something is illegal. That, that is certainly a possibility, isn't it? So if some lawyer says something is legal, I already said, I don't need to repeat it.
Yes. So what you would do is follow advice of your attorney. There are oftentimes other attorneys who like to give you their legal opinions, but they always have an agenda. Your attorney has one agenda, and that's the best interest of you as their client. Other attorneys, they're going to have other agendas. So yes, if two attorneys walk into a room, someone's going to try to convince you of their opinion. Is their opinion in support of their client? Or is their opinion in support of the city? So my team and I work only for the benefit of the city.
Right, okay, I I understand now. I'm just trying to point out that the the attorney for city X might have a completely different opinion than an attorney for city Y. And so everything is is not a hundred percent black and white. But I don't think we need to go down this road anymore. But so I I think you've answered my question, so thank you.
Counselor Sherazai?
Yes, I'd like to call the question. We've been debating this all night. I think we know the direction it's going in. Let's just vote and get to business.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to call a question. Please cast your votes.
I, what, what are we voting on right now?
To call a question.
Right, so only to vote on.
We're calling the question, yeah.
What's that mean?
Means that we'll, we'll stop debate if it passes.
That's what I said. That's what I'm saying. Yes, because the people voting no think we're voting on something else right now. I would just point that out that this vote is only to stop debate and vote on the original. Yeah.
Thank you. All right, that passes uh ten ayes, one nay, the nay being Counselor Springsteen. Okay. So will the clerk please read item four into the record?
Public hearing on item four, ordinance O dash twenty twenty-three dash thirty, an emergency ordinance temporarily enacting and enforcing a nonrenewable anti-growth law for the purpose of developing or amending land use plans or land use laws covering residential development or the residential component of a mixed use.
Mr. Clerk, sorry, I think we still need to vote on the previous motion. Sorry, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, that's the exec session motion.
Yep, that's the executive session, so forgive me. Okay, so we'll go back to the original, though, of whether to go into an executive session or not. Please cast your votes. Okay, and that passes, but not with a super majority. The lack of super majorities, counselors Abel, Jansen, Oliver and Springsteen to deny the executive session opportunity. So I'll now ask the clerk to please read item four into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Public hearing on item four, ordinance O dash twenty twenty-three dash thirty, an emergency ordinance temporarily enacting and enforcing a nonrenewable anti-growth law for the purpose of developing or amending land use plans or land use laws covering residential development or the residential component of a mixed use development.
Or I open the public hearing. Uh, Counselor Jansen, your hand is up.
I mean, yes, um. So um, I I'm all for transparency and I hereby move that the city council does not recognize HB twenty-three twelve fifty-five as a valid law of the state and direct staff to continue to enforce LMC fourteen uh dot twenty-seven and to take all legal steps necessary to defend LMC fourteen dot twenty-seven, the strategic grocery initiative.
I'll second that, but I don't think we need that motion right now.
Well, there's a motion and a second, and um so unfortunately, by doing that, you've since cut off all the public comment towards this, so if you would like to go ahead and move forward, there's a motion in a second. Any discussion on this ordinance or on this one before us, Counselor Franks?
I would just like to say that I had many legal questions that would have uh informed a uh ability to uh be well informed in advance of the vote, and I'm quite disappointed that we did not get a chance to ask very relevant legal questions that would have ensured that we were better positioned to uh to cast our votes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Abel?
Uh. I would just like to note that uh we're in public session. We're doing it the proper way. Uh. I believe this has, this motion has some risk to it. Uh. But every motion we, every thing we approve has some risk to it. Um. So, and there are always legal questions out there about everything. So after while I listen to this discussion, I will make up my mind which way I'm going to vote on this, but there is a level of discomfort. Uh, there is also a level of knowing that by doing this, we put ourselves solidly behind the uh clearly stated wishes of our voting public. Thank you.
Counselor Oliver?
Yes, as I was saying, I think we might have jumped the gun there on that motion, but I still wanted to second it. Um, could, could somebody give us, whoever, well, Adam, Mayor? Um, perhaps you could give us a um, how you thought this meeting was going to go, because I've looked at uh our city attorney's um email today, and she had three options and was saying that we are voting on three options tonight. And I believe that Counselor Jansen was afraid that we were going to jump straight into number three, and she likes number one a- as do I. Um, but could you just give us some background on how you intended this discussion to go ahead, and maybe we can get it back on track? And also for those who worry about asking questions, I mean, and and the city attorney not being able to respond, ask them. And perhaps they are not in the realm of something she cannot respond about.
Right. So just to answer, yeah, procedurally, just like any other opportunity that we read in a second reading ordinance, or in this case, it's a yeah, it's a second reading. Um, we open the public hearing, we have public comment, and then we have a a motion read in, and then that can either be amended, voted up or down, discussed, changed. So the, the actions tonight were just the same as we always do and have done. And um, so that's.
But not necessarily, because it looked like from that email today that we were, we had three options that we were going to talk about and vote on one of them and pick one of them. Um, and we're afraid that that one has already been picked, one of them has already been picked. And um, so, I mean, how are we going to go through talking about three options? There is an ordinance that you're presenting for sure. Um. But there's only one, one option inside of that. So which option was that? And how do we change that? And how are we proceeding here?
So, yeah, the option before us was the one that was set for public hearing tonight on first reading. And there's also two others. And again, this goes back to the lack of our ability to have conversation with our legal counsel as to the three different options. And so we are limited to that. But we're following the protocol that's set up on the first reading for us tonight to look at oh, two oh, three zero dash three zero on second reading, which would allow for the public comment first off on that and also on any of the three options, because I know those are out into the community, as well as uh the opportunity to amend, to vote up and down on all three and to see what passed. So that's what was before us tonight.
Okay, but nuts. Uh, so three options in one ordinance, that just doesn't strike me as you're saying that like what we were going to do was to bring up the ordinance and inside that ordinance, it says we were going with number three. And if we wanted to go, council wanted to go with something else, we would have to defeat that ordinance vote and then make a different vote for a different option.
Yes.
What you're saying?
Correct. So either the, I think the three options were to either uh comply with the state or not to comply with the state or to take the third option, which is the off ramp.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, so how proceed now that we have a motion and a, and a second?
Well, we're debating what's on the floor right now, so I have um Counselor Sherazai, Mayor Guerrero, Counselor Springsteen, and the motion makers hands up, so.
There we go. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Sherazai?
Yeah, I would like to call the question on this as well, since we have limited things to discuss regarding this, and we were really here to discuss the the second reading of the ordinance was my understanding, so I'd love to end debate and call the question for the vote.
So there's a there's a call to call the question on Counselor Jansen's motion to um I think it was, let me go back and look at what that was. Her motion was to direct staff through regular motion to, let's see here. Through regular motion to immediately stop, you know, to enforce LMC fourteen twenty-seven and to fail to recognize House Bill twelve fifty-five as a valid law on the state. So there is a motion to call the question in a second, so this is strictly on calling the question to the vote on the motion. So please cast your votes on calling the question.
I'm sorry, don't we get to talk about calling the question?
No, I don't. It's not debatable. So it looks like calling the question passes.
Um. How, how is that not debatable, whether to call the question? We have not discussed this issue.
Yep.
Why are you the city attorney, Mayor? Can we talk to the city attorney? She says she represents the city.
Certainly, we can ask about calling the, calling the question. There was a motion and a second to call the question. I'll give her a second.
And my question was, don't we have debate on this calling the question?
That's fair. Thank you.
I apologize. I'm struggling to get my computer to turn on and off this evening, so it is taking me an extra couple of seconds. Um, so for those of you who are not familiar with Roberts Rules of Order, there are certain privilege motions that do not allow debate. Calling the question is one of those. So once it's been, uh, once the motion is made and seconded, there is no debate. The mo- the vote is just taken, and that's pursuant to Roberts Rules of Order.
Right. Thank you. So again, we have a motion and a second to uh call the question. Please cast your votes. Okay, and that passes uh eight ayes, three nays, the nays being Oliver, Jansen and Springsteen. So that'll take us to the original motion that Counselor Jansen made, which was to direct staff through the motion to continue to enforce LMC fourteen twenty-seven and to fail to recognize HB bill twenty-three twelve fifty-five as a valid law of the state. Please cast your votes.
Uh, we finished, I'm seeing a lot of hands up. Have we finished discussion on that one?
Yeah, counselor, so once, yeah, once, once the question was called.
I got it, I get it, I get it, I get it. Thanks.
Okay, and so that motion fails. Um. Please keep these up. A motion fails. Set eight, no, seven, four, the nays being Mayor Guerrero, Paul Stewart, Vincent Franks, Sherazai Strom. Okay. I'm going to now open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-three dash three zero. And just mention to those who are tuning in that the two options before us now are either the actual twenty twenty-three dash three zero or um, the third option, which is to not enforce fourteen twenty-seven. So the rules, uh, this is the point in the meeting where the public is invited to address the city council. They ask that all persons calling in observe the decorum of city council meetings. Um, you'll have an opportunity, if you'd like to raise your hand at this point, you can go ahead and press um nine, star nine to go ahead and get in the queue. We will call you over. There'll be a three minute time limit, and when your time is at thirty seconds, we'll go ahead and give you a and when your time is up, I'll ring it twice. And uh politely ask you to wrap that up. In order for our clerk to keep record, please again, give us your name, an address or name and ward, and uh we'll go ahead and get going. So if you'd like to get in the queue, again, please. And uh we'll go ahead and get going, so if you'd like to get in the queue, again, please go ahead and press star nine. And I have Ms. Kentner and she has requested to pool, so let me just make sure I know. Think that your people are here, but let's just make sure so we can click these off. So we'll do ten minutes for Ms. Kentner, um, and she's pooling her time with Ms. Herskovitz, Mr. Kenny, Miss. And Mr. Barthel and Ms. Brewer. So I do see Mr. Kenny. I see Ms. Hurkett's, I think that's Liz, so there's three, so. We'll go ahead and bring you over and I'll let you know when your time's going. And I will note that there were thirteen comments on Lakewood Speaks. And if you are calling in and you did write a comment, please try to refrain from redundancy. All right, Ms. Kentner?
Thank you, Council.
Yep, give me, hold on real quick, let me, let me get your time going, okay, go ahead.
So now I should start?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Council. Um, luckily, I do not plan to take all ten minutes as I would like to clarify. That I will be addressing the one and only ordinance that is on Lakewood Speaks where the public is um. Is directed to check the agendas, evidently there seem to be a couple of different classes of citizens. Those who are available to some other information and the majority who are, have what was online on um Lakewood Speaks. So on the public agenda tonight is second reading for an emergency ordinance. That would effectively put a two-year sunset on the voter-approved Lakewood Strategic Growth Initiative. In twenty seventeen, nearly ten thousand signatures were collected from people wanting strategic growth for Lakewood. And in twenty nineteen, the voters approved the Lakewood Strategic Growth Initiative. A permit allocation system giving the city a mechanism to do what everyone agrees on. Prioritize the housing we need to be built first, affordable housing with ownership opportunities. But instead of listening, there was a concerted effort to silence the voice of the people. First, city resources and staff time were used to draft talking points against signing the petition. When that didn't stop us from gathering signatures, a court action was tried. And when that failed, big money developer interest groups poured over a half million dollars to beat us at the ballot box. And when that failed, the people breathed a sigh of relief. We won, they cried, and trusted their elected officials to finally be responsive to, to the demand. For Lakewood Strategic Growth. But behind the scenes, city staff continued handing out building permits without hearings. Behind the scenes, while the people who supported the initiative were busy working one, two, even three jobs to support our families. Trusting that our elected officials would respect our vote. Those same special interest groups were hard at work at the state level to try to reverse. The constitutionally valid vote of the people. The result was HB twelve fifty five. A bill which amounts to nothing more than legalized name-calling and suggests that the state can usurp. Our local land use control. Now, tonight, this body is considering a second reading on an ordinance. That misleads and fosters divisiveness by calling supporters of the Lakewood Strategic Growth Initiative. Anti-growth. Now, tonight, this body is considering and not considering. I can't believe you're even considering acknowledging that the state can override a vote of the Lakewood people. The purpose and intent of the Lakewood Strategic Growth Initiative was not to cap growth. And it obviously never has kept growth below one percent. What this does tonight is to sunset the only mechanism you have for prioritizing the housing we need. For putting affordable units first, a requirement to get money from Initiative one twenty-three for affordable housing. Oh yeah, where's the discussion on that? Back to tonight. How does this ordinance tonight further a public policy for the public good? It does not. This ordinance tonight does not provide for one affordable unit. Or house even one person who, who is unhoused. It does nothing to address affordability or inclusivity. Does this ordinance provide for the hearings that Representative Lindsted says every project deserves? No, this ordinance would take away the few public hearings we have. This ordinance does encourage displacement of families. And encourages urban sprawl by continuing the practice of demolishing the single-family homes most in demand. And replacing them with unaffordable rental units, all in the failed, failed name of affordability. Don't be so short-sighted to think that you may never be part of the minority. Don't be so short-sighted to think that someday you may not be the one without money and power. We live in a democracy, a representational system. And when our legislators don't represent, the people have a constitutional right to petition. Please don't take that right away tonight. Don't endorse a false assumption that a larger government can bully a smaller one. How does a position that a vote of the people can be overturned further our goals as a city? It does not. By doing this, you are stating that you agree that Lakewood has an anti-growth law. We do not. That is insulting to your constituents who are not anti-growth. And through a citywide vote demanded strategic growth. And if you think those same demands don't exist, you would be mistaken. Just this last Saturday, the Ward One meeting was dominated by conversations centered around a development. And concerns over the density, lack of open space and infrastructure. And the fact that there is absolutely no requirement that a developer has to work with the neighborhood. Say no to this ordinance tonight and put in place what people have been demanding and agree on. Inclusionary zoning and public hearings, real affordable housing and a true say in the way our community develops. Lastly, this ordinance tonight, this meeting overturning a vote of the people. Is being done in a meeting virtual only. That's like a breakup through text. Not even the courtesy to look your constituents in the eye.
Right, thank you. All right, so Mr. Holman? Us, we have your name, but address or ward will get you going, let me reset the timer too, please.
Sure, uh, can everyone hear me okay?
Yep, just let me get to this little timer here.
Perfect.
All right, go ahead, you, name, are we, uh, ward or address?
Yeah, I'm in Ward Two, uh, my name is Brian Holman. I'm thirty years old, I've been a Lakewood resident in Two Creeks for six years. Uh, I'd like to posit against the emergency growth ordinance, uh, first, uh, it'll soon be illegal according to state law. Um, if we want to enter into, into any form of conflict with the state, I think we should hold another vote amongst the residents of Lakewood. Uh, do they want to use the city budget to potentially enter a legal battle? Um, we didn't know about this three or four years ago, so I think holding another vote might be worth it. Uh, second, I understand the reasoning behind adopting the growth limitation. And understand that there are issues associated with rapid growth. However, the issues attempting to be addressed by the growth ordinance are not being addressed directly by it. And unintended consequences of it have and will make many issues worse. If we want more green space, let's legislate something for public green space. If we want less traffic, let's write legislation for funding alternatives. If we want affordable housing, we need to bolster housing supply by improving zoning. Working with developers and providing more housing options to residents, not just single-family homes. Not just apartments, but townhomes and duplexes, et cetera. Uh, if we want better infrastructure, let's build more efficiently. Uh, according to expert economists, urban planners, transportation planners, growth ordinance. Ordinances like this have a negative impact on all of those issues. Fewer taxpaying residents results in less tax revenue for our city services and infrastructure. Fewer homes close to job centers leads to additional sprawl. Which reduces green space, encourages more driving, which leads to traffic and decreased air quality and personal health. Uh, it also increases infrastructure spend since more piping, wiring, roads, et cetera, are needed to serve this sprawled-out residents. Uh, it also reduces housing availability, which increases homelessness and leads to all sorts of other problems related to homelessness. Uh, if we want to address the problems that are caused by increased growth, we have to address those problems individually. Using the data and knowledge from experts. We can't solve these issues caused by growth by simply limiting it within our own city borders. Young families will simply move elsewhere, such as Arvada, which was recently ranked one of best, the best places to live for new families. For reasons that Lakewood is falling behind on. Please, City Council, be thoughtful about Lakewood's future and the future of our residents and families. And oppose this growth limitation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. And again, just to remind the public, if you'd like to speak, go ahead and press star nine and then you'll press star six to undo that. The first ding is thirty seconds and the second one is times up. Mr. Thormasgard, go ahead and bring you over, give us your uh address or ward, I'll start your three minutes.
All right, yeah, my name's David Thormansgard, I'm with Ward Three. And uh, I kinda agree with Brian. To, to say that. Like, the people voted for this initiative, how can the state supersede it? Like, you also voted for. The state government as well, and so they're representing you too, and if the state sees. Community's doing something that it thinks is wrong, I don't see why they shouldn't be able to regulate that. And I think. That our codes could be better, and that's why we should vote. To go ahead and um, give ourselves the time to think about how to adopt that, if we just. Go in and say, oh, we're just gonna develop a new um, alternative to fourteen twenty-seven right now. Like, that's, that's not gonna give us a good solution to the problem and. Uh, I think we do open ourselves up to some liability if we don't make a decision and the whole thing goes in. Into order tomorrow, and so I would say we should vote for. The extension, because it gives us the time to think about how we're gonna address these problems. Um, without opening us up to that, that um, liability for not complying, so. Uh, thank you for uh, your time and I hope you guys can make a good decision.
Right, thank you very much. All right, anybody else in attendance wish to speak on? This, please raise your hand, and that's gonna be star nine. Going once, going twice. All right, I think I saw a hand go up. Maybe not. I see one that goes up and goes down. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment. On ordinance twenty twenty-three dash three zero. And I'll ask for a motion to be read into the record and then we can discuss debate.
I move for the adoption of emergency ordinance oh dash two zero two three dash thirty on second and final reading.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second on this. Urgency ordinance, so any discussion? All right. Counselor Mayak Guerrero?
Yes, I wanted just one point of clarification, I hope we can get from the attorney's office, which is. So if we. Don't pass this emergency ordinance, then when the state law. Becomes the law, like is enacted, is effective, are fourteen twenty-seven just fully goes away? Or is that, am I misunderstanding, like what ends up happening if we don't pass those?
Uh, first is Lauren Stanek available? She is the senior uh assistant city attorney for land use and she's worked with me very closely on the research of this issue. And I wanted to make sure she is.
Yep, she's in the meeting now, welcome.
Hello, thank you, everyone, sorry, I had to join as a panelist, um, so thank you for your question, Counselor Mayak Guerrero. So what you have in front of you, this first um, or this motion that was just made, if you decide if, if there is not majority vote cast. Obviously, then, members of council can propose other motions. Um, I know that that was done at the beginning of this public hearing, but the next option would be that. If, if a council member chooses, they could move to specifically recognize House Bill twenty-three dash twelve fifty-five as valid law. Taking effect tomorrow, there could be other motions made from counselors, so. Based on, well, however you vote on this motion, there are still many other options that um, that you can pursue. But sort of to be working through the options that you have done so far.
To clarify, uh, Councilmember Matt Guerrero. The, the question that I understood you're asking was whether or what were the consequences of the outcomes of this vote? And consequence one is if it passes by a supermajority, it passes as an emergency ordinance, which means there's no thirty-day. Um, wait period, it would go into effect immediately and it would be in effect tomorrow, the same day that the state law goes into effect. It can be passed by a majority but not a supermajority, then it goes into effect as a regular ordinance. Meaning it would become law in thirty days. Because a majority of the city council will have made it clear to staff. That they intend to follow twelve fifty-five by passing this ordinance. In the thirty days pending between the vote and it going into effect. Staff would be very careful not to enforce any sections of fourteen twenty-seven, which would be in violation of state law. Or it can fail, so. One of three outcomes from the vote on this particular ordinance, and as uh. Lauren has stated, if this ordinance should fail, city council has a variety of other options it can pursue.
Spring, grow, do you have any follow-up, is that?
No, I think that that was my main question, I, I guess I asked that question too, because we really are hearing. Both in the comments online, some of the emails, discussions I've had with constituents, and I think even among folks here, um. Just. The lack of, right, there are folks who are pro continuing with some level of like smart growth. And wanting actually more control, and so this is seen as a way to move forward with that, where we pass this ordinance. And then we buy ourselves some time to actually figure out good alternatives that are still legal under this new state law. But that still give us and the people of Colorado adequate tools to actually like influence the development in Lakewood. And I would actually argue that while I am somebody who is not generally in favor of the SGI, I am very in favor of. Increased uh oversight process and transparency around our development, I'm very in favor of increased programs to. Um, adequately fund and support and create affordable and like mid-range housing. I'm also very in favor of sustainability measures that would require more green space per unit, per person. Than we currently have. And the, for me, the SGI actually is not adequate on those things. And the original language said very little about affordable housing and was certainly at least not um. Legally, you know, written, now it's always talked about affordable housing, but we actually had to fix it last summer in order for it to be possible. For affordable housing developers to qualify for the necessary funding and subsidies. That they needed to develop affordable housing in Lakewood since the passage of the SGI. So I just feel like there's that mixed message there, where then you hear somebody. So I just feel like there's that mixed message there, where then you hear somebody. Speak about, we shouldn't pass this, we should just let the state law do its thing, and hopefully we'll come up with something better by the time, you know, we get sued on it. Or we hear the other side of it, whereas if we pass this, and that means returning our back on this idea of smart growth at all. And I think that's kind of why I was asking that question, is just try to tease that out. I think that for me, I'm not actually in favor of this. Ordinance, because I do think that we need to create. Something better and more, and I think that we will end up honestly being like in a space where we're vulnerable to lawsuits because of. Not passing this, but we weren't able to get all of our legal advice that we needed, and we weren't able to chew on it and think about it in the way that we needed to actually come up with all these legal options. And I think that's really unfortunate. Versus, I also know that there are people who don't want us to pass this because they think that that's how we continue the SGI. So I just wanted to, I'm trying to like tease out exactly kind of those consequences, you know, without putting us in a legally difficult conversation. So thank you so much, and I got apologies for my voice.
No worries. Uh, Counselor Stewart.
Thanks, yeah, I think I'm struggling with um, some similar, um, some similar issues. I know that there is. Concern. That this would be potentially a continuation without us really taking responsibility for. Addressing some of the actual, the very real needs of our community around housing affordability and housing supply. And also making sure that we are holding folks accountable to design and aesthetics. Um, and green space and sustainability. Um, and so I. I know this is going to throw a wrench in public comment for a hot minute, so I apologize to the folks with their hands up, but I'm going to make. A motion to amend this ordinance. So I'd like to make a motion to change where. Is mentioned twenty-four months, up to twenty-four months to up to twelve months in the declaration. And in section one, and any subsequent sections that I've missed. Um, I believe those are the only two that I see. Just to, to be able to hold us accountable to all of our voters to really. Put something in place that really meets the needs of our community. I don't love the idea of, I think twenty-four months is just kicking all of the cans down the road, regardless of how one feels about this ordinance. So, um. My motion is to amend. Um, ordinance O dash twenty twenty-three dash three zero in the declaration section and section one. Uh, to change twenty-four, up to twenty-four months to up to twelve months.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, that's Councilman Matt Guerrero. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Does anybody wish to speak to that motion? Counselor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. First, I would like to say, I, I certainly appreciate what Counselor Stewart is, is attempting to achieve there. Um, but I'm four months away from being off of council. There will be a new counselor. These jobs have a very steep learning curve. We also have a, you know, a community that is evolving and changing every day. I see it when I look out my window and see. Kids on bikes that I haven't seen before, so we do know neighborhoods are changing. And, um, and I, I may be asking a legal question that can't be answered. Um, but I'm going to ask it anyways, and if it can't be answered, please, but my understanding is that the. This two-year period or this kind of is a one-time option. And what I'm trying to understand is if we were to lower that to twelve months, does that. Prohibit us from ever capturing back the additional twelve months that we would have had, had we not shortened the timeframe?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. So in this particular case, the House Bill twelve fifty-five. Basically said, uh, up to twenty-four months, and it was meant to be, uh, you could change land use plans or laws incrementally. If the council decides tonight to reduce the, reduce that timeframe to twelve months. To pass, you know, new land use plans or laws during that time. Um, you would, I believe we would be able to come back close to that twelve-month mark, but the council would have to. Vote to actually extend and use those remaining twelve months that the bill allows for. So, but that would have necessitate obviously another public hearing and another vote down the line. If for some reason, city staff or council was not ready to take action within twelve months.
Thank you, I appreciate that extra detail. Unfortunately, I, I won't be able to support this. I think that these matters are complicated enough. Um, I know that whoever takes over in for representing Ward Four, I know they will work hard, but that just is not enough time. For a very complicated issue that I think needs to have a lot of, uh, public input. Um, and so I, I would not be in support of the shortened timeframe, but, but I appreciate and understand why it was offered. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Oliver.
Yeah, I'd echo Councilmember Franks' statement just there. It's, if it wasn't, if there wasn't an election, if we weren't changing half the council. In a few months, yeah, you, you might think about twelve months, but, but I know how, I know now how slowly. City government moves. And with the new people coming in and we're going to dump this on their laps. Uh, no, it's just not, not enough time. I'm sorry, I have to vote no to. Thank you.
Right, Counselor Abel.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things, well, more than a couple of things. A lot of procedural irritation here. Firstly, voters, I hope in this city have a long memory and realize what we have done. With their, uh. Constitutionally protected direct democracy access. Secondly. We seem to have a new move toward making eleventh hour amendments. That are quite. Impactive on the legislation in front of us after our public has had them. Uh, has had the information in front of them for days, if not weeks. People don't like government by surprise, and I certainly don't. The, uh, but my main concern is that. Once we do this. We have abandoned the targets of SGI, and I would like to remind someone who just mentioned how. Unlikely it was to relieve. The high cost of housing. Every year that SGI was in effect, forty percent of the allocations were set aside. For affordable housing and not one allocation got used for that purpose. Why do you think that is? It's because developers know dang good and well. They don't have to do that, they're going to get what they want anyway. Thank you.
Also, Springsteen.
What I always find so fascinating about these situations is that certain members of these, of this council. Are allowed to make motions and to make them at the eleventh hour. And allowed to make amendments at the eleventh hour, and certain members are not. The mayor never allows me to do this, which is discriminatory, I will point out. And so only certain members of this council are allowed to speak. And the fact that we just had this, this circus of what happened with the first motion tonight. Demonstrates that. And what it demonstrates is that the people of these, this city are not allowed to speak. Um, all this motion does is to sunset. What the voters voted on twelve months earlier. So it's an even quicker dismissal of our local democracy. And, you know, just looking through some of the times that, um, local democracy. Has pushed back against the state. I mean, all I have to do is a quick Google on it, HB twenty-two ten twenty-four. Five cities, home rule municipalities. Um, sued the state and Governor Polis in twenty twenty-two. Regarding exemption of construction and building materials used in public school construction from sales and use taxes. Those municipalities pushed back. Against the state, and we are being advised by our council tonight. That whatever the state says goes, that is not legal counsel. I, I would like to ask our legal counsel, when you say you represent the city, what does that mean to you? Please tell us who you are representing, because this legal counsel. Is not getting me where I need to be. Please tell me.
Ms. McKinney Brown.
Yes, I've given this council no legal advice whatsoever. Concerning whether or not I believe this is a legal law or an illegal law. The city council has not heard that. I'm not exactly sure what Councilmember Springsteen is referring to, but those words have never come from myself or a member of my staff.
Counselor Jansen.
Well, what I wanted to do before you guys asked the question on me, I wanted to temporarily move my motion. Um, so we didn't get to discuss why option one would have worked. Um, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Counselor Sherazai.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to note for the public that second reading is the appropriate time to make an amendment. I've often been accused of blowing up things at the last minute, and I think it's really unfair and breeds mistrust in the community. There's. Tell me the, the additional place that we would be offering this up. You know, some of us are following procedures. We're entering into these conversations. We've met with our constituents. We're doing our homework and we're coming prepared to have those conversations and discussions. And we get hammered publicly for that, and I just find that really frustrating. Week over week for us to be able to have this sort of dialogue, we need to be able to make amendments, and the second reading is the place for which to do that.
But we all.
Counselor Springsteen, you don't have the floor. Counselor, you don't have the floor. Uh, Counselor Stewart, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, I just want to clarify a couple of different things. Um, one. That. We have absolutely no idea about the legality of the state overturning. The will of the people, because again, we were not. Allowed to go into executive session and ask those questions. So I, I'm just happy to go ahead and ask that question now and see if we can get an answer. Is the state allowed to overturn the will of the people in this particular case, and is that legal?
Thank you for your question. So, Councilmember Stewart. Unfortunately, I can't go into too much detail and tell you about. Again, the legality of this law or what we, what the city can do in response to it without. Basically going into privileged information. So, um, unfortunately, I can't really give you an answer to your question. And I'm just going to leave it at that. Apologies.
Thank you. Um, that's helpful clarification. Just want the public to be able to see that we're not able to get certain answers. Because we were not able to go into executive session. Um, the concerns about overturning the will of the people is why I voted. Um, and led the legislative committee to strongly oppose this legislation because I had concerns about that. But we're past that now. Um, there were the votes to pass that, and so now we are here today. And we're dealing with the reality of a new law that calls that question, but we can't make a decision based on the legality of that. Because we have no idea and can't get any advice. Um, so. I, you know, again, that's all I've got right now.
So, so just a quick check, and I, I really want to ensure that we're being respectful in our thoughts and our words and our actions to our peers. As well as to our staff. So I'd really encourage, I know this is a, a challenging subject. But, um, I'd really encourage council to, to continue to do that, especially as we engage with staff. Counselor Franks.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I wanted to maybe ask the question in a slightly different way. Um, basically what we're trying to do is make sure that the public, uh, you know, is, is well informed about the challenges that we're facing tonight. So, um, I'm going to present a quick hypothetical and see if that question can be answered in a way that might at least illuminate that. So if I were to, um, have an issue and want to, uh, take something to the vote of the people. I go through all of the avenues to do that. It goes to a vote of the people, and let's just call it object A. Object A passes. And then my, the, the, the question I would have then is, so it passes a year or two from now. Is the council able to modify or nullify that action that, that would have been taken, uh, by the voters? Guess I'm just trying to get to, um, you know, showing the fact that, uh, you know, laws are very complicated. But they're also able to be modified, and so I don't know if our legal staff would be able to answer that. But what I'm trying to do is just share sort of maybe some illumination on that topic.
And thank you, and Counselor Franks, I think what your, what your hypothetical goes to and what, um, Counselor Stewart's question goes to. Really concerns the doctrine of preemption, and I know that there was perhaps some information given to council about that. But what's difficult and why, why we can't go into too much detail is that there are situations where, um, legally. Where there are matters of, of local interest, state interest, and mixed interest. And so in the hypothetical you posed, where you just say, you know, object A or object B or whatever, whatever it may be. It's hard to really provide a thorough legal opinion or legal answer, because what we would need to really examine is. Is this a matter of state and local interest? And then from there, there's a, you know, a test as to whether or not. You know, the state can, can preempt laws, or is this a matter of local interest or purely statewide interest? So unfortunately, without being able to go into specifics, I really can't provide a more detailed answer. About what can supersede what.
And thank you so much for that. That's what I'm trying to illustrate. That's why I so desperately wanted to go into executive session. I had all these types of questions which would have been able to be fully fleshed out with all of our counselors and brought back to bear. So I was just trying another way to say, we are trying to be as educated as we, as we can, but there are questions that I would have liked to have gotten. Uh, legal input for and would have liked to have a conversation with all my fellow counselors on that in order to come back with the best decision. But I, I realized, and I thought you would not be able to, given the hypothetical had no specifics about those very issues, but thank you, appreciate it.
Counselor Oliver.
Okay, Lauren, I'm going to pile on. And follow, do the exact same thing the last two counselors talked about. I, I don't think you're being real. Honest about your answers. They are asking you about general. Wild hypothetical questions, and you're going into specifics about our speci- our specific. Uh, ordinance, and I mean, I, I think Counselor Stewart asked you if the state could overwrite. Um, a local law. And that, to me, is a very simple question. It's yes or no. Um, not, not something all about, well, we have to talk about Lakewood and I can't get, I have to be in specifics. You know, it's like, yes, I'm sure they can. Um, it's like, uh, the feds have told the states, then the, the municipalities, uh. That, um, you know, gun ownership, abortion, I mean, you name any topic, and the, the feds tell us. What we can do. Um, and the state tells us what we can do on certain things. They just tried to pass two thirteen that was going to. Um, and the state tells us what we can do on certain things. They just tried to pass two thirteen that was going to tell us all um what we could do. And so I believe you're the answer is yes, and I don't believe you're being forthcoming enough. And and you're switching their question from a very general question to something very specific, which you might not be able to answer. But there both of their questions were very general.
And I think Councilmember Oliver, I think what's what's difficult or what I'm trying to wrap my head around is we're we're talking about hypotheticals, but when I'm given, you know, object A, object B, or or trying to speak specifically to this ordinance tonight, I can't provide an informed legal opinion. I know that
Try. We're not trying to ask you about this ordinance tonight. We're trying to ask you simply this question. Can the state override a municipal election? Uh, municipal municipal where the people all vote. That's that's very, very simple. Let's leave anything about what we're talking about here in this ordinance tonight out of it. Can the state pass a law that overrides local control? And I have to say the answer is yes. Are you gonna say the answer is no?
All I'm to all I'm trying to to get across, uh, council member is that there there are examples like you've mentioned, let's say, oil and gas, water law, things where the state has decided this is a matter of statewide concern. We're gonna supersede all local ordinances or local rules. Then there are matters like zoning where case law has stated and courts have supported that that is something that's of local concern, and that's why you see a lot of municipalities with their own zoning codes. I can't give a um uh more specific description.
You answered the question right there. There is oil and gas things where the state oversees um supersedes local control. That's that's the answer. Um, so you don't need to go down. Sorry to interrupt you there, but yeah, you don't need to go into this because we're not. They didn't ask you about this. Thank you very much.
And so we have two more hands up, and I'll continue to go just just to check. I let I let everybody talk on things outside of what the motion is, but we'll finish up and get back to the motion, please. Councillor Springsteen?
Well, I, you know, again, this this little game of cat and mouse where we're asking direct hypothetical questions and we're not getting legal counsel because we're gonna throw a tantrum because we didn't get to go into executive session is not right. The public has a right to hear these issues. The example I gave you was something that CML and Kevin uh Bommer, who had CML spoke to this challenge to an unconstitutional piece of legislation adopted by the General Assembly and signed by the governor is a great test of home rule authority. He was speaking to that House bill I told you about twenty-two ten twenty-four. Kevin Bommer and CML have said the same thing about this, and our own council will not at least speak to other situations where local authority was superseded. And they challenged that at the state level. Um, this is, this is not right. This is um ramrodding the way that certain members of this staff want this to go. That's not okay. You, and I'm gonna ask the question again. Counsel, who do you think you represent specifically? The people of this city? This council who represent the people of this city? The staff? The mayor? Who specifically? The city manager? Who specifically do you see as your client in this matter? Because that will help you to answer the questions that we're asking you.
Councillor Abel?
No, I asked a question of the city attorneys, and I'd like an answer as to who their client is.
Councillor, you've been on this body for four years, and you're an attorney yourself. I think this has been explained.
Yes, it has.
If council wants to ask that, they can, but I'm not gonna have you badger them.
I'd like to ask that.
Use them. If council wants to ask, answer that, they can. If not, I'm gonna go to Councillor Abel.
I can answer that, uh, Mr. Mayor. So Councillor Springsteen, we obviously look to our guiding document, the Charter, and under section four point six B, it specifically delineates um who our client is. And it says the city attorney shall be the chief legal counsel of the city and the legal advisor too. And that includes city council, city manager, all departments of the city, and boards and commissions. Um, and then obviously the city manager being Ms. McKinney Brown, she um then can appoint, promote, suspend, transfer, remove employees in the office of the city attorney. So she can, she decides who we serve, but it's per charter. I I can't hear you.
You said the city manager, and and I think you meant the city attorney, but I think you answered my question by saying that because that's who you really represent, isn't it? The city manager, not the city council.
We represent four four entities per charter.
Thank you, Ms. Stanek. Ms. Uh, Councillor Abel?
Thank you. I just want to correct one thing. I believe relying on the information that Stanic gave us earlier. We're not looking at a second reading. We're looking at an emergency ordinance. And depending on whether it passes with a super majority or not, if it just simply passes with a majority, then second reading would be next week. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Councillor Abel, no, I'm sorry. That's incorrect. We actually had a first reading on this. And so this is the bona fide second reading. There's not, there's not a third reading.
When was the first reading on this?
Uh, that was
Miss Stanic say?
Uh, Councillor, that was at our last, at our last regular meeting, sir.
Did Miss Stanic say our last regular meeting?
Yes, sir.
I believe Miss Stanic said that if we pass this by super majority tonight, then that's one thing, but if it passes by just a simple majority, it becomes second reading next week. Is that what you said, Miss Stanic? Or did I?
Uh, no, Councilmember Abel. So if it passes by a super majority, it becomes effective immediately. If it passes by a simple majority, then it would go into effect thirty days from tonight. So
There wouldn't be another reading?
No, there this is second reading. There wouldn't be.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, Councillor Abel, we had we had first reading on uh July twenty-fourth.
I'm hearing the stream is down.
Okay, we'll go ahead and let Mr. Goldstein know. Thank you. Councillor Jansen?
Yes, I I have a question. So we're still on the amendment motion, correct?
Correct.
Will we still have some time for um speaking on the main motion?
Yes, ma'am. So the the way this works is it's read into the record as as the public hearing is opened. It's written in the record. There's public comment. The motion is made to bring it in for discussion. Once discussion happens, then amendments are taken. Those amendments voted up or down, and then we move on to the next phase of discussion.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So going back to the original motion that Councillor Stewart made would take this from uh up to twenty-four months to up to twelve months. So everybody clear on that? Okay, there's a motion. The second was Councillor Macarero, please cast your votes. Okay, and that motion fails. And it let's see here, it's
Riley, you're upside down.
Oh, eight to seven, seven, sorry. Four to seven, the nays being Jansen, Oliver, Springsteen, Abel, Franks, Vincent, and Strong. Gotta make sure I got that right. All right, now we can continue conversation on the body of the ordinance. Councillor Oliver?
Okay. I still have a problem with the wording of it as I did at our last meeting when we talked about this. So I'm gonna ma- uh make a motion. Uh, I, simple, it's real simple. I move to change the word anti-growth to strategic growth everywhere in ordinance O dash twenty twenty-three dash thirty.
Second.
That's that's all. I just don't believe it's um it's not anti-growth. It has never been anti-growth. Um, if it was anti-growth, there wouldn't be anything being built, and we have things being built all the time. Um, SGI is was stands for strategic growth. Um, but when I voted for it, when it first came out, uh, I looked at it and I said, oh, yeah, a little bit of a um, you know, we don't want to stop growth completely, but and you don't als- you'd also don't want to let it run away like a runaway train. Uh, and so strategically limit limiting it seemed like a good idea at the time. And so I don't like the idea of the being called an anti-growth law. Uh, and so therefore that is why I made the motion, and um perhaps our lawyer wants to address that because I brought this up previously, and she was saying that it uh it has to be this way, but I'm still gonna stick to my guns that I don't believe it has to be this way. And so if if you want to, um, the city attorney wants to say it has to be this way, uh, could you tell us why? And what would happen if we change it anyway? I mean, could the would the police come and check and and grab me and drive drive me out? Or would the state sue us? Or, you know? So
Neither of those eventualities. Before you second it, though, you should be aware, the language anti-growth law came directly out of uh House Bill twenty-three twelve fifty-five. This is not law. This is not language that that the city staff made up. Remember, we didn't have any direction from city council on what city council might want to do. There there were three options, clearly three options. You can vote follow twelve fifty-five, don't follow twelve fifty-five. This ordinance is option three, which which is allowed for within twelve fifty-five. And and what this ordinance does is it picks up that language in twelve fifty-five that says there may be some cities that have anti-growth laws, and that's the language of the statute. I didn't make it up. But it says there may be some cities that have this this kind of a law, and they may need a little bit of time to transition. So this option is just picking up the language exactly out of the statute. I don't think you can go back and change or take the word anti-growth out because you'd be changing the language when every time we cited to the statute and use the statutory language, it says anti-growth law. So if you changed anti-growth law, basically, we'd have to remove the the citations and make it clear that we were no longer citing to the statute, which changes the nature of of the statute itself. So I understand why that is a distasteful phrase to you. But we were very carefully following the exact language of the law to make it very clear which section of the law was being invoked in order to give a city council this this third option.
Okay, um, by the way, it's already been seconded. Um, could we uh change the wording somehow to like leave it as anti-growth parentheses? Um, strategic growth? Would that be a big problem to it? Would that like um send off flares and fireworks and things like that?
If you would like to change the language within the very first uh recital, which references uh the law that is currently known as residential growth limitations. It may have been initially adopted as strategic growth limitations, but it was codified as residential go growth threat limitations. And therefore, because that's its current name, that's the language that staff incorporated into this statute. If you want to change that, or if you want to add into residential growth limitations initially known as strategic growth uh initiative, or if you want to throw it into that very first recital, um that would be fine. Anywhere else you would actually be changing the language of of the statute, which, again, we we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be doing that.
Okay, I I I change my motion to include what you just said, if the second wants to go along.
Second.
So there it is. Um, could you read it back? Because I don't have it right now.
For proper procedure, don't we need to first reverse it? Again, we we need to kind of go backwards in in order. This
So so if Councillor Springsteen will take back the second, please?
There you go.
Second.
Okay, and then Councillor Oliver, will you?
Right, I'm hoping that um um Ms. McKinney Brown could tell me what I'm trying to say.
To amend the first recital to include the phrase strategic growth initiative after the words residential growth limitations.
So, Council, you could say so moved.
So moved. Okay. Now I need a second.
Yep, now you need a second.
Anybody want to second that?
Second, and and I hope we have some discussion about how 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 to word that.
Well, it was just worded, and you just seconded it. Did you not want to second it? And change the wording?
I believe that we could move ahead and and have discussion about this, just like we've done with many other things.
Well, I understand. Councillor, I'm just, Councillor, I'm just saying that your seconder wants to change the potentially change the language, so maybe hold off on seconding and have the discussion about if you want to change the language that you just seconded.
Yeah, but can we have discussion without seconding? I would think it dies right there without a second.
Well, I'm happy to give Councillor Springsteen the floor.
And uh
It is seconded, and so if you want to have the discussion, you can make either resend again or make a motion to the motion.
I'm good with discussion.
Yeah, my my thought was just to clarify that the anti-growth language was specifically in the House bill and is not our language under the ordinance and that uh we as a city do not define it as an anti-growth initiative. That that was the state's definition. So perhaps an amendment clarifying that language, and that's why that language is in the ordinance in the first place.
Okay, for housekeeping purposes, Ms. McKinney Brown, would it be better to just have that section put in? If it's amenable to Councillor Oliver? So that is codified rather than an additional piece?
As I'm understanding it, Councilmember Springsteen is suggesting she would like to add a recital to um the top part of the ordinance explaining uh additional information. And if any member of the city council wants to make that motion to to add an additional recital with additional information, that's fine. The last time you passed emergency ordinance, it was you amended that emergency ordinance as well. So this is uh pretty common practice.
So, Ms. McKinney Brown, though, just for clarification, though, I think that both these objectives get to the same point, though, right? One is a recital and one is in the
There both both are in the recitals. The recitals are just it it just explain the ordinance, the actual language of the ordinance is is always underneath the now therefore be it ordained. So the recitals just explain the background and history. Um, the the motion as stated by Councilmember Oliver is to just include the the additional name of strategic growth initiative in the initial paragraph recital, which clarifies, I think it makes him uncomfortable that residential growth limitations, which is the current name of that law uh exists, and he would like to have the original name put in. So it could be put in right there. And then as I'm hearing, Councilmember Springsteen, she wanted a longer explanation, which would probably require an additional recital.
Okay.
And it's and I did second Councillor Oliver on And it's, and I did second Counselor Oliver on the original thing we were discussing, so I think both would be. Um. The way that.
That's what I was going to clarify, though. Do we need two separate motions or can it all be incorporated under one?
Uh. I think it would be cleaner for two separate motions. Uh, technically, maybe you could do it as one, but it, it gets really confusing when you are led, when you're writing law from the bench. As to exactly what you said and what you meant.
Correct. Okay, so we have a motion, a second. I still have, and this is on Counselor Oliver's original. Mayor Pro Tem Strom, your hand is up. Is that to the motion? No, okay. Counselor Springsteen, is this to the original motion or is that residual? Okay, well, the motion is second, please cast your votes. Okay, and that passes. A I three, nay, the nay being Stewart, Stewart. Vincent and Charzai. All right, Counselor Springsteen, you want to make a motion?
Yes, I, I move to add a recital that clarifies. That reference to anti-growth in our ordinance. Uh, was done merely. To mirror language. In the state House bill, but does not reflect. What our. Strategic growth initiative actually is. Which is not anti-growth.
Is, is that before, there's a, just hold on real quick before there's a second. Is that the, is that the bona fide language you want or do you want some help with that?
I'm, I'm happy to defer to the. City attorney on this as well.
I think her li, her language is fine, Mayor. I, I've written it out.
Right, so we got that. So is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Counselor Franks, your hand went up on this one and then went down. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem. Okay, all right, so there's a motion, a second on the recital referring that uh, anti-growth is statutory language. Please cast your votes. Okay, and that, let's see, one, two, three, four, five. So that passes six, five. The five nays being Strom, Vincent. Charzai, Stewart, and Mayor Carrero. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Strom.
My raised hand was back to the original ordinance. Is now the appropriate time. We've moved around.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to take a minute just to note that. This, the two years gives us the opportunity, I believe, to work thoughtfully through. Creating that path is best for all of our like, like good residents. This is something that. It's a significant shift and we're stuck in a really complicated place because we've got. Some concerns um, from residents over here that are concerned about how we grow, where we grow, where density is, but we also have. Residents that are begging and asking for more legally defined affordable units, workforce units. We have. Organizations within our community, Red Rocks Community College is one of them, that's having a hard time finding workforce because they're having challenges. Living in the community that they would be teaching in. This is something that if we take that two years. And really convene all stakeholders, and I'm talking about like, we've got families, we've got business, we've got community. To come up with the best tools. I believe we've got a lot of opportunity right now because we're actually already. Having conversations about the, the housing study. That just came out, that is working right now within the Housing Policy Commission, and we're launching later this month, the Comprehensive Plan. This gives us the opportunity to take this and drill down with those and actually hone in the tools that we're using. Like around zoning to make sure that we're doing the right things in the right places. So the or, the ordinance that we had originally in front of us tonight. Um, I would support and I want to make sure that it's because we do. Know that we have very complex community needs that are on both sides, that we really fundamentally need to sit down and figure out that best path forward. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. Counselor Jansen?
Thank you. Um, so I think twelve fifty-five was just a gross overreach by the state of Colorado and Governor Polis. And it's a problem that extends beyond the people's, the people's uh, Lakewood's, uh, the people of Lakewood's Strategic Growth Initiative. Uh, the subject matter could be a dozen other things besides planning and zoning. An excuse that politicians at the Capitol use to ram this House bill twelve fifty-five through. Reflects that they don't care about local control, that they don't care about the voters' voice. So as a city councillors, our residents need us to stand up. Option was, one was the only, um, was it, was going. Option one was to continue to enforce the strategic growth initiative and to refuse to recognize the shameless. And audacious political power grab. That's why I supported that. Um, I just don't think I can support anything that. Has anything with twelve fifty-five in it. Thanks.
Also, Charzai.
Yes, thank you. Uh, you know, I'm having a really tough time getting behind this emergency ordinance because I, I feel like. We've seen, there's been publicity in recent uh, weeks, you know, that big Guardian article that I know a lot of us have read. Um, you know, showcasing even the co-authors of this uh. Growth limitation are saying that it's not working. And so what happened in twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen. Are different times now and we're in a housing crisis and. I'm just having a real tough time moving through another two years of supporting something that has proven to have no positive results in getting us affordable housing. It does nothing to move us closer to those goals. In fact, it's done everything, I think, to move us in a different direction and so. For me, I don't know that I'm feeling confident in supporting another two years of punting this. You know, I think tonight. For example, you know, some of the conversations we're having are just, we need to get to work for people to find solutions on, on how we're going to get affordability in our community. We had a public comment earlier talking about the housing that was going in and mentioned during the Ward One meeting. That's forty-four affordable units coming in. You know, we need to be supportive of things that like this that are happening and absolutely encourage. Our community to work with, in this case, Metro West Housing, which wasn't clear in that public comment. But we're not doing a great job of supporting that. And I think that by supporting this emergency ordinance, we just give ourselves two more years. Of living through this bad policy.
Right, Counselor Abel?
Come on. Me, my.
You're on, we got you.
Oh, thank you. Um. You know, for ten years before this thing was passed. These folks came to city council. And asked for what they wanted. And they were widely ignored. We didn't have the housing types that were called for on our housing studies. We didn't have any move toward affordability. And as far as I can see, we still haven't had any move toward affordability. The committee that was going to deal with inclusionary hous, housing had its knees chopped off. We have not, in fact, we have moved the affordable housing discussion to the uh, Housing Commission. Where it was supposed to have been taken up last weekend. Oh, yeah, we can't get to it again. So what we have done is made zero progress. In four years. Toward affordable housing. And we have advocates for affordable housing setting in nearly every seat on city council. Why is that? Thank you.
Counselor Oliver?
Hi, I'm sorry, but I'm going to get a little tiny bit off topic, but it's already been taken off topic by others earlier. Um, the, the, the Legislative Committee voted unanimously to oppose this bill, twelve fifty-five. When, uh, when we talked about it. And it's unclear now. Um. What Lakewood actually did about that. And I'm going to be, I just want to. Give fair warning that I'm going to be looking into that and bringing that up at future meetings. Um, but it really isn't germane to what we're talking about right now, but. Um, since it's already been mentioned, I thought I'd bring it up that yes, we are looking into what Lakewood did. Um, about. Uh, talking to our representatives down at the State House. Uh, I know one of, one of them um, voted no on it and two of them, that the, of the representative, our representatives voted yes. Uh, I've heard things about how Crested Butte had went down and, and got themselves. Um. Exempted from twelve fifty-five. And I think uh, as a postmortem on this, we need to be looking at some of those things down the road. And so I'll, I'll, we'll come back to that, but. That's something else. I just wanted to use that as my final thought. Thanks.
And, and Counsel Oliver, if I might just real quick, I don't think Crested Butte was exempted. I don't, I think a matter of statewide concern means everybody is. Part of this. I think one of the mountain communities uh, made some protections in their affordable side, but I don't think anything was, anybody was exempted.
And that was Crested Butte, right?
No, sir, I don't think so.
Okay, I'll have to check on that one. Thanks.
Counselor Springsteen?
You know, I, I first wanted to just. Address that, the idea that voters voted on this a long time ago. Therefore, we don't have to uphold that. I mean, they ha, they voted for a lot of us a long time ago. And. It, it has to be upheld that we're still in governance. So, so that's. Not a good argument, but I also wanted to, to, to. Reference some community rights movements that I've seen. And here's a quote. The right to local community self-government serves as the foundation for the American system of law and is a central tenant. Of our Declaration of Independence and state and federal constitutions. The people's right to self-governance has been routinely ignored by our elected representatives. And overridden by the courts in favor of corporate rights. That's Thomas Lindsay Community Environmental Legal Defense Fund. And essentially, over the last two hundred years, corporations have manufactured a structure of law in which they have. Ever increasing rights and privileges today, allowing the preemption of community self-determination. When corporate interests are at stake. Corporations prioritize maximizing profit. Typically for distant investors who have no connection to the community. Consequently, the best interests of the community and its environment are less important than corporate. Exploitation of natural resources. And where we see this in state and federal preemption is. That there are laws that allow large corporations to force harmful activities into communities. Despite community opposition. All of you who vote. To override our local law. Are voting for those corporate interests. And many of you were very much supported by them. So it's not a surprise to me. But it's very disappointing to both me. And your constituents.
Counselor Vincent?
Yes, um, this is, this is difficult for me because as everybody well knows, and I've gotten chastised before. I had people from my ward wanting to know specifically. How the SGI got passed and it overwhelmingly got voted down in Ward Two. Um, but I've told those people that I have an obligation now. Whether I like it or not, to support what the voters want. Um, and this is, this is difficult for me because I think we're all around. I like, um, my co-counselor. I'm not a big fan of the SGI. But I, I do have to listen to the, the city as a whole. I feel very, um. I, I don't like the idea that we could not ask questions, where we could clarify, where we could get information. And I feel. I feel hamstrung, I'll be honest. And I couldn't even ask questions. I mean, I get disappointed when I hear that Metro West wants to build something. And everybody's up in arms about it. Cause I, I will tell this council, although they liked that article. That was in the Denver Post, I laughed out loud. I mean, I really laughed. Because what they showed as a picture for this um, growth, this unwarranted growth, was a picture. Of the mental health facility that's going to be for forty people who are homeless with wraparound services. They didn't mention that. Nor did they mention that we're kicking off forty more units, sixty, I think, forty or sixty. In two weeks, that's on twenty-second Wadsworth. So there is things happening. That may go off a little bit, but I'm going to support this because I think you need the time. To carefully look at all the issues that are involved in this. I mean, right now, from what I've heard from this council, they want to look at green space. They want to look at design, et cetera. There's a lot of things that impact that right now. So I've always been one who says things do not move fast enough, but in this one. I, I gotta compromise somehow and say that people need to come together. And there's nothing that says you have to take two years. Doesn't say that anywhere in there. You can actually move these things through faster. So that's where I stand.
You, Counselor Oliver?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to summarize and make sure that um, I'm on the right page. So if we vote. Yes, uh, SGI basically sunsets in two years and goes down in between. Uh, if we vote no, with a simple majority, this thing goes in, no, wait a minute, that's wrong. If we vote yes and there's a super majority, then SGI sunsets in two years. And is in effect tomorrow. If we vote. Yes, with just the majority, then there's going to be like a month where there's a problem. Um, and uh, I don't know, there's a bit of a problem. And if we vote no, SGI goes away tomorrow. Is uh, um, Ms. McKinney Brown, is, am I, am I accurate? Or close?
If the ordinance passes by a super majority, it will go into effect tomorrow. If the ordinance passes by a simple majority, it will go into effect, it'll go into effect in thirty days. But in order to. Um. In order to follow the direction of the majority of the council, the uh. Fourteen twenty-seven would not be enforced in the next thirty days that we would not be in violation of the law. If it fails, city council. Can take any other action. Uh, you can, as you can make a motion to follow twelve fifty-five as it is presented. You can make another motion to not follow twelve fifty-five. If this ordinance fails, um, it just falls back on city council to make a decision on what it is you want to see happen. This was just one of three options that staff was trying to make available to you, so that you would have all possible options in front of you.
I understand. Uh, I, I think we got down the road of a, like the anti-abortion wording on that one. If you vote yes, it's no. But if we vote yes, I, I know, I know what it is. Thank you very much.
Counselor Stewart?
Yeah, thanks. Um. Just in all transparency, as we're going through this uh, publicly, I want my constituents to know that I am. Also really struggling with this decision. I'm going to be honest, I don't actually. Totally know how to vote on this yet. For a few reasons, um. You know, the wheels of government sometimes move slowly. Sometimes that can be really, really frustrating. Um. Sometimes it's a positive thing. Um, I think it's a balance, you know? Um, I was hoping that my. Motion to really kind of light a fire under us as a city council to take response. I was hoping that my motion to really kind of light a fire under us as a city council to take responsibility and you know, put something forward a little bit sooner and move up that timeline as a commitment to the community. You know, I mean, obviously, I'm disappointed that that failed and I realized that we don't have to take the full twenty-four months. You know, it was more, it doesn't functionally change anything, but it was a public commitment, you know, on my part to to do that. So just want to state that, that just because that motion failed to the public doesn't mean that we can't work on this faster. I want to say that we hear you. You know, it doesn't just if this potentially passes and and ramps down over the course of the next two years, that doesn't mean that the concerns of our citizens went away. And I recognize that. I have constituents who are really concerned about being able to stay in their community and work in their community because they're getting pushed out by high rental prices. And we can't build enough, you know, income-based housing fast enough. You know, there are folks in our community like myself who really, really struggled to purchase their first home because there's just absolutely no supply. And you're competing with so many other people to be able to you know, set down roots and, you know, build generational wealth. And I know that those are concerns. And I know that there are also concerns that a lot of my constituents have, we're in conversations right now about the aesthetics of some larger housing projects that we need because we need, you know, more spaces for people to live that are affordable, but also recognize that they need to fit in with the character of the neighborhood and it's okay to have design standards and it's okay to have green space standards. And so I just want to say to all of you that I hear you. And I think sometimes it feels like some of those concerns and priorities are competing, but I don't think that they are. And I think that there's a way that we can move forward to really honor the needs and the desires of our community to continue to build a Lakewood where people can live, where people can set down roots. But that is also inclusive and where all are welcome. And, you know, I, sometimes that's going to take a little bit longer than we would like for it to. But at the same time, maybe it's a good idea to just hold ourselves accountable to that. So all that to say, I'm still struggling with this decision, but I just want my constituents to know that that's where I'm at. And hopefully, that's because I'm hearing what you care about. Feel free to call me and email me tomorrow if that was not an accurate representation.
Councillor Springsteen.
You know, a couple of misconceptions that I think are always out there about SGI. You know, where I came from in supporting it originally was watching the displacement and gentrification of the neighborhood in Denver where I grew up, where there was this great diversity, families of color, black families, Hispanic families, Jewish families, all of that is gone now. It has all been replaced with these high-end row houses. Everybody's the same color. Everybody's upper middle class. Everybody has a dog. Nobody takes the light rail, even though it's a block away. That was what I wanted to avoid in Lakewood. And and to oversimplify that people who support SGI are just NIMBYs or racists or whatever people say is it's totally off base because you know, everybody's affected by this lack of affordable housing, no matter what, even if you have your own home right now. My brother can't live here. He has to live in another state. And that makes me really sad. We're all affected by this crisis. We all want to make it better. My best friend was homeless for twelve years. He has terrible stories of what he went through. I want to make affordable housing for the homeless. I I think there's a bigger picture, which is the preemption of local rights that we need to look at because it sets a precedent, what we do tonight. But beyond that, we owe it to our community to to respect what they asked us to do as their representatives. We don't get to override it just because the couple of years have gone by. And I mean, I think it's as simple as that. And so my understanding of our vote, and please tell me if I'm wrong, is if we vote this down, this ordinance, we can then come back with suggestions on other things we could do, such as upholding our ordinance, our fourteen, our our SGI ordinance. If I'm wrong about that, please let me know because there seems to be a lot of confusion about if we vote this down, what happens next? So please help. Thanks.
Oh, I'll ask for our attorneys to weigh in.
This is one of three. There are three obvious responses to 1255. This is one of the three obvious responses, this ordinance. Staff is is providing it to the city council so that you would be have the option of of this third way to respond to 1255. If the city council does not want to respond to 1255 with this ordinance, you can certainly go in a different direction. One option is to direct staff not to follow 1255. One option is to direct staff to follow to follow 1255 effective immediately. I think someone stated earlier that what this ordinance does is eventually bring the city into compliance with 1255, but give the city some time to get there. So those are the three options. If this ordinance fails, you can still go back to one of the other two options.
I think there's some confusion, though, Ms. McKinney Brown, because there was a motion that failed that said to continue to enforce Lakewood Municipal Code fourteen twenty-seven and to fail to recognize HB twenty-three twelve fifty-five as a valid law of the state.
That failed.
Yes.
That that one failed, so that specific language cannot come back. But if a majority of the city council wanted to direct staff not to follow, and they came up with alternative language about that and a majority followed it, at this point, what you have to do this evening is is come up with a direction, some direction, and the first ordinance failed, which suggests to those of us listening that a majority of the council would not want to do option one. But again, you're making these decisions as you move forward and I'm trying my hardest not to give you direction or limitations. So if there is alternative language that would come somewhere near alternate option one, or maybe combine option one or two, I don't even know what that would look like. We'd have to listen to it, I think, before we could just say no.
Councillor Franks.
But I just want to clarify, we still can't get legal advice on any of it. So we are we are back to a full circle moment, thus the underlying issue for many of us where we are doing our level best without being able to explore the options. I want to keep stressing that because, again, we've tried this twice. It is very frustrating. I know we're all working very hard. But again, we're working hard when many of us had a very long list of questions which would have been greatly beneficial to this discussion tonight. I know that's not where we're at at the moment, but I'm going to keep stating it over and over again that that was to do nothing nefarious, that was to do everything to give us the opportunity to ensure we had a quality, productive conversation that allowed every councillor to explore every option that they thought might have been viable to test it with other councillors. And no votes would have been taken. So I'm just going to keep stressing that. I'm certainly prepared to do my my job tonight, but it has been made very difficult by not being able to get that quality information and quality discussion with my fellow councillors.
So we still have a motion in a second on the floor. Is there any other discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, we'll cast your votes on the emergency ordinance twenty twenty-three dash three zero. So that passes one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eyes, three nays. The nays being Abel, Janson, and Springsteen, which means that does meet the emergency threshold. Okay. Well, that is all that we have on our agenda for this evening. So I thank everybody and we'll adjourn this at eight twenty PM. Thank you.